16,000 acres, as I've said before, is the yes to our surprise, to my surprise. Other cities and other counties can actually own land in a county adjacent to them, and they do, off our tax rules, by the way, a different story, but they own about 3,000 acres of the sector plan area. So, next slide. This is currently what's out there. You're looking at about 12,000 acres of actual minus wetlands. Currently, about 9,000 dwelling units that have been built with these. Over 200 million square feet of non-residential space. That means anything else, that's obviously not realistic. It's not something that we're planning for. All right, here's a visual. It's a little bit better. I'm sorry again if you're up closer, but I thought this might be a little bit bigger. But here's the status quo scenario of what happens if the commission, Sean Parks, in particular, nobody takes any leadership in this, let's just say, in this situation. What you have is what I call piecemeal growth. Well, here's a visual to demonstrate that. You have the 16,000 acres which is broken up, would be broken up into various blocks. And if you can see that, you have basically the dots. Let me go over here for a second. These are houses. This could be some kind of, the green would be what you would call open space. It could be some wetland that's on the side already. The little shopping cart, that's a commercial opportunity. These little ax picks here, that's potentially maybe a mineral opportunity, sandmine, okay? This is what you'd have under the current development scenario, the current status quo. If we did nothing, you would be looking at a development pattern that looks like that, piecemeal houses spread out all over the place. Some might be on one per one acre, some might be two per acre, some might be one to five, one unit per five acres. Very haphazardly done. And I say this not meaning to offend anybody particularly that lives in South Lake, but if you go to South Lake, you see developments that have been done in piecemeal fashion, and they're put on roads and approved and on a road system that cannot support it. You see here, there's no plan for roads, how to connect this and make sense of this. So, if we do nothing, this is what you essentially see. You see in the far right, you have Concert 2 being preserved. These, let me question, these are not actual locations. Don't look at the sector plan as if that's a map. But what I'm trying to show here is that this is what you have over the next 30 years. Again, we're having some 150,000 people projected to come to Lake County in the next 30 years. This is the development pattern you face versus what I'll show you in a second here. Existing conditions, again, assuming that development pattern, you have the scattered uncoordinated development, which is very inefficient and costly for roads. We have the hardest time trying to keep up with roads as a county now. We don't pay for roads out of your property tax. It's all paid for by gas tax. New road construction now by impact fees, which are backup. But I can tell you that it is, it's extremely hard, knowing the project list and the total cost, there's no possible way to try to keep up with it the way it probably should and could be. And to have a development pattern like that is just fiscally, I think you're responsible for the next generation, which will be tagged with something far more costly than we already have trying to keep up with. Limited high-wage job creation. Right now, there is no, when you build houses, yeah, you do get some jobs. I mean, there's no doubt about that. There is a job, a benefit to that. But without a little bit of thought and planning to it, you possibly aren't going to get those higher-wage jobs that we talk about for economic prosperity. Limited recreational opportunities, limited flexibility for the landowners. Again, it goes back to being more predictable, more simple for them, which is fair. That's why they're involved with this. They came to us. You have a lot of development that, you know, could be on well and septic, which around the lake, that could be a problem if you're right up against the lake. You have no technology infrastructure, which is something I want to talk about. I could talk about that for probably another hour. I won't, but you know why, you know as a nation, we're woefully inadequate with high-speed infrastructure. There are unfortunately European countries that have a far better infrastructure system because it's new for technology transfer. When you talk about trying to attract jobs where you have people, you know, being employed that makes six figures, doctors, health specialists, that want to do what's called telemedicine, you need gigabyte per second wireless connection speeds. You need even terabyte per second wireless connection speeds to do real-time training. And there's no infrastructure like that in all of central Florida that we're aware of. There's only a couple of countries that have locations that have that infrastructure in place. We have a shot of getting that here. It takes some money to do it, but you have to plan for it first. If you don't say that that's going to be part of the vision, then it will never happen. So, that's what we're trying to go after. The sector plan will call for the technology infrastructure to be in place, to be put in place. We'll look for opportunities to partner both with the government, but also private initiatives to provide that as well. Next slide. You factor in the existing conditions with Claremont annexation. Claremont has openly, even before I was elected, desired to annex pretty much the entire area. What does that mean? Well, what that means is that you will have, you'll have, could have up to 27,000 actual units of development, residential. They have very, their minimum land use category is three units per acre. So, you're looking at at least three homes per acre. You know, you'll probably get more multifamily, that kind of stuff, proposed as part of annexation. So, you know, for us to remain, this is what I always get a kick out of, well, we should just leave this alone. Lake County should just ignore this. Don't even get step foot in this issue. Why are you encouraging them? Because they're going to annex. The utilities, they provide the utilities for the developers trying to get economically, rightfully so, benefit out of the land. They are going to increase those densities that are going to be there. They have to. I mean, that's just, that's just what they're going to do. This will not be status quo. It will be annexed, and you will get 27,000 units per acre, possibly done in that piecemeal fashion, at least in a plan that maybe may not make sense to everybody in Lake County. Next slide. So, and this is just, I'll just kind of go through this one. This one, again, just shows the possibility. You have 27,000 dwelling units, it's a possibility. Everybody seems to want to talk about housing units, dwelling units. That's why I'm putting it up there. That's just one measure, by the way. I'm trying not to get off on a tangent here as to what, how you measure growth and quality of growth and what you're looking for in planning. We get so fixated on that number. There's so much more to the story than dwelling units. But when you talk of dwelling units, that's what you're going to get with Claremont, so. History here, Lake County and sector planners recognize the need that a plan that would, for the plan that would prevent negative impacts for unplanned growth in South Lake County, capitalizing significant volume of contiguous single ownership of vacant areas in South Lake County, putting it all together instead of putting it 100 acres at a time, which is what has been done, particularly in South Lake. They saw the benefit of the sector plan. They mean the landowners. That's why they've paid for most of it. We've contributed some as well. They want that predictability. So, where are we now? The history, the landowners, again, as I've said, have helped finance the plan. Little John Engineering was the company that was chosen, you may remember this, to conduct the plan after going through Lake County. And a Lake County initiated RFP process that was all done the right way. They launched the sector plan in May of 2013. And what are sector plans, again, from a legal standpoint? They are in state statute. This is the actual statute number that probably only Representative Metz may know, but it's 163.3245. That's a Florida statute. It says its sector plan is encouraged or is allowable at least for 15,000 acres. The state sees the benefit of the sector plan because you're planning, and that's why it's in state statute. Very different than a DRI such as the VLO City, by the way. Development of regional impact. The primary goals of the sector plan include promoting long-term planning for the conservation, development, and agriculture on a large scale. There are some sensitive areas out there, eminent, sand yields, habitat areas, that in cooperation with landowners could be protected. There's also existing agriculture. Agriculture's great. You can go out there right now, you see Blueberry Farm, a very large Blueberry Farm, some citrus. Those folks have contributed to sector plan. They want to remain in agriculture too, by the way, and that's compatible with the sector plan. Okay, next slide. Approval of the sector plan is accomplished in two stages, a long-term master plan and the implementation of the master plan through detailed, specific area plans, DESAPs. And I know people's eyes blaze early when you start going out after them, but the master plan is what, is really what you need to think about when we want to talk about the sector plan. It's not a development plan. You may have seen somebody in the paper, perhaps, one of the papers, that likes to call a development plan. It is not a development plan. It is, quite frankly, a set of planning criteria on a large scale for a 16,000-acre area that says, when you do have growth, it will be conducted in this approach, this fashion. That's what, in that fashion, that approach is the DESAP, the Detailed Specific Area Plan. Long-term master plan consists of a framework map, which will provide policy guiding, and that's, as I said, policies. It's policies, and that's what we do. It's policies, guiding development form, and a governmental coordination and protection of the natural resources. This is all within the state statute. It's not something I'm making up. A general identification of the water supplies, which is very important. All the transportation facilities, regional, significant public facilities are also included as a requirement for the sector plan, showing that. The sector plan versus the DESAP, again, we're talking very broad. General conceptual development. It's not engineering plans that Sean Parks has hidden somewhere from developers for subdivision layouts or anything like that. It's a sector plan framework. It's a conceptual framework for very important planning principles. The DESAP level, again, the Detailed Specific Area Plan, is where you get into specifics. And in this particular case, it requires at least 1,000 acres for the DESAP. So, you'll have the sector plan being implemented, hopefully, as a framework. And anybody that wants to come in between now and the next 30 years, that wants to do a development, has to come in 1,000 acres at a time. Landowners know this, and remember, they're all part of it. There's some benefit to them, and they will present their best plan that is more specific in how we can address jobs to housing ratio, water resource protection, roads, schools that are in place. Schools, by the way, for the school board, none of that changes. It's concurrency. We are a county of concurrency. We will be, in my mind, always a county of concurrency. School facilities must be addressed before a development is approved. None of that changes with the sector plan. This is very different than the DRI, Development of Regional Impact, from VLO City. VLO City is a plan. It's got roads and golf courses and houses, all that stuff laid out. This is not that. So, that's a big difference. Lake County involvement, basically, just to sum it up, Little John went through the sector plan last summer, presented in November of this year, right, Robert? And then, we decided that we had some revisions still needed. There were still some concerns. City of Claremont has some concerns. They are a partner in this. And so, we have been working on that, and that is coming to a head now, where we will get engaged with the City of Claremont and the landowners and sit at the table and try to come up with a sector plan that works. And so, I think that'll happen this summer. The goal is to create a plan that is superior to the status quo, that status quo that we are in now, scenario. It is simple, flexible, and predictable. That's what we want when we talk about economic development, creating a better environment for business. We want simple, flexible, and predictable. A jobs to housing ratio of 1.5 to 1. 1.5 jobs created for every one house that is part of the plan. Right now, if anybody can guess, I don't have a prize to give, but I would if I could. It's, you have to guess what it is right now, what our jobs to housing ratio is. Maybe I told you that. It's 0.6, about 0.6 to 1. So, it's kind of awful when you're looking at that metric. This will also, we want, we want the utilities and infrastructure, those services planned out before, to accommodate, instead of doing while development is occurring. That's what this sector plan will do, and it's superior to the status quo. I'm just going to touch on a few of these. What the sector plan will do is create five tiers, similar to land uses. They're not land uses that create little, you know, little town centers and the T and D kind of stuff, you know, forcing people in a sense to live in those kind of things, those, those things that you see, you know, the idealistic kind of pictures. It's not, it's not those land use categories. In fact, that's one of the changes we made from the Little John plan. Each tier, there's five tiers of land, five tiers, similar to land uses. Each tier will allow full complement of land uses within a range of densities and densities. There are the commercial industrial requirements that will be calculated as a requirement. That's why I said, specific to the housing that comes along with it. So, again, instead of seating a table with urban center, town center, village center, and the list on and on and on of different land use categories, simple, we have five categories. Town center, wellness way, wellness way 2, 3, 4, with very simple criteria, broad criteria that they will meet conceptually, instead of a long list of certain requirements for each land use category, which would require them to go in. If they wanted to do something a little different, go in and go through a very lengthy process to try to get that changed, even though it might make sense. This is very flexible, predictable, and simple. And they will essentially come forward and present, put their best foot forward in the DESAP process at 1,000 acres. And we will see, it could be this commission, probably not, it'll probably be a future commission that'll have the first one, and they will decide, this is good, this is good, it meets the criteria, this is what we want for the county, or they will not. And so, they will also have at that time the opportunity to decline or turn down the DESAP, which is very key, I think, as well. The land use capacity within the sector plan will be, in a sense, capped at 16,500 versus the 27,000. Landowners are good with this. And again, they see the, they see the benefit of having a higher quality of development and something that's not done in piecemeal fashion, and it doesn't make sense, it lowers everybody's property value. So, quite frankly, they can probably get more for their land under those conditions than they can for the status quo. And we'll go to the next slide. So, in a development scenario underneath the sector plan, again, this is just not a map to take literally, but it's just kind of figuratively here. You have something that makes a little more sense. Your roads are going to be planned beforehand. You'll have your open space and your, you know, also to add the topography. Everybody's familiar with that area. It's got the highest elevations in Florida. Landowners, we recognize that, there's a benefit to protecting some of that. That will be part of, you will see that in the sector plan because we're planning for it now, instead of, again, doing it in piecemeal fashion. Next slide. We're almost done. We have a coordinated, efficient development pattern. Low-impact development has been talked about, Commissioner Sullivan, that's kind of been a big thing for him lately. That will be emphasized as part of the plan. They'll, again, have, it'll create significant opportunities for job creation versus what you have now. Because what you have now is, it's really easy for anybody, relatively easy, to go out and, again, develop 100 acres, 400 acres at a time, put all houses on it, which don't provide job opportunities. I mean, there's maybe a little bit, but not like if you plan something out and you set aside, you're required to set aside, because of that jobs to housing ratio, area for commercial and industrial. That'll be a requirement. It's a broad requirement, but it's very important, that you wouldn't get with the current status quo. And again, the technology infrastructure is going to be encouraged. You wouldn't have that if we didn't have the sector plan. Water conservation strategies as well. I think we need to be a little different. I'm trying not to touch too much tonight on the water issue because it's a whole other topic, but we do have some problems with our water. And it's important that we address those and just come right out and not be afraid to address it and do what we can. I'm talking water supply issues. So, we're going to be fighting, you know, not to be off on a tangent here too much, but quite frankly, all of those regions are going to be fighting for a very limited amount of water, according to the St. John's River Water Management District, not us, and to how that water is allocated. So, we have to plan for that and make that part of the plan. And this table just kind of summarizes everything. I'm not going to really touch on this because I think I just want to go right into some questions, but it's just the status quo versus what you would have with the sector plan. And in conclusion, I think the defining question is not whether the sector plan strategy is better than what exists today. The defining question is whether the sector plan strategy is better than what would occur if we do nothing. And I just feel passionately, you know, bottom of my heart, you hired me, I'm honored to be your public servant to serve you. You hired me to think about these things and think about the next generation, so that's what I'm trying to do here. So, I will take some questions. I think I got most of it, Robert? Okay? And if I can't answer, maybe Robert can. This man, please.
Who determines that Claremont gets to annex our property?
Well, the landowners, the landowners, any annexation, most annexation is voluntary, although there are some exceptions in statute that were like a neighborhood. Could be annexed, if 80% of the people vote to be annexed. Actually, I think it's 75. So, you could, there are some cases where you could involuntarily be annexed. But they will be annexed because they need utilities to develop. So, the county doesn't have utilities. So, they have to annex into Claremont to get utilities. They're within the utility service area.
Yeah, we're already an existing neighborhood, though.
You're an existing neighborhood, but you're not in the sector plan, so. Yeah, this is, this is about the next 30 years for that area, which is, if you drive out there, you'll see what it's not, most of this.
I live down there.
Okay, yeah, you know, yeah. So, it's, that's what this is about.
I heard you mentioned South Lake County and Claremont. The villages are now building in Lake County on the north end. Are they doing it in a positive manner, and is it having a positive effect on the income for Lake County?
I don't know exactly what the village is proposing, other than I know it was a number of several thousand units. I haven't seen their master plan. It's kind of like the VLO City, DRI, master plan. Until I see, you know, specifically what their layout is and what they're proposing, I couldn't comment entirely. All I can, all I can tell you is that generally speaking, with all houses, especially on a mass scale like that, I mean, you need to have some things there to make it, to make it, and I hate to use the word sustainable, but sustainable economically for the future. I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to script the question. I don't know specifically what they're proposing. So, I hate to say what, up or down, whether it's good. I know the villages does, does some very good development, that they, they have the town center, they bring the commercial, and they bring, you know, quite frankly, a lot of residents that want to retire here, and that's, I mean, that's a good thing. So, either spending money? Yes, sir? Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, we did a necrotic analysis for one of their projects, for actually the city Wilder, and the villages actually develops and spends off, close to almost 750, 800 jobs a year, every year, both on campus and off campus. And when we did the work for Frithland Park, because they bought Pine Ridge Dairy, and they're going to build 2,000, 50 homes in Frithland Park. And Frithland Park's already getting the spinoff from that, and they haven't dropped a single house in Frithland Park yet. Development's already starting on, going to start on 466A, where private property is already starting to change hands for commercial along 466A, because they're not going to build any commercial within their Frithland Park purchase. And so, and it's also redevelopment starting on 441. People are already starting to buy voltage commercial on 441. So, there's positive spinoffs there. But there's a direct benefit of economic development off of the villages because they generate their own jobs, because they attract big boxes. They attract almost all the commercial retailers. They have a commercial arm of commercial marketing. They go to all the big commercial marketing shows all over the country and in Europe, because they have one thing that they market. They have that golf cart access that they capture on campus, that they can guarantee right now about 135,000 population going to their commercial centers. And that's a hell of a draw. And so, that attracts those, those commercial vendors, and they bring jobs because a lot of those people don't work. And so, the employees flock to those places, and those employees can't live there.
No, I'll just tell you, Greg, the key is, is they put a plan together.
Yeah, they do.
They put a plan together, and that's, that's why that makes sense. I mean, they thought that out. They know the questions. And I, you know, again, I'm not trying to be evasive. I just hadn't, I didn't know the specifics of it, but, yes, sir?
This is the conception of the need, which is the process by which the public goes to its leadership and says, this is what we want, as opposed to the leadership going to the public and saying, this is what we're going to do.
Well, this is, this is an open process. So, we, we've had county commission meetings, which have been open and advertised, which you get plenty of opportunity to come and speak about it. It's all online. Nothing is being hidden here. Everything is online. You can get the information. And you can contact me or any other commissioner about it at any point, and, and I mean, that's why we're here. We want you to see what this is. There's nothing to hide from this.
I'm not suggesting it. There's been any, you know, the transparency's not been there. It's just that typically, you see it, people embrace things stronger when it comes from the bottom up as opposed to top down. And, you know, it seems to be that you would want the stakeholders, particularly in this sector, to have that type of public investment and commitment in order to make implementation after subsequent approval by the county.
Absolutely. Yes, yes, we, and Robert's reminded me, make it very clear again, we've checked with the landowners every step of the way on this. I mean, we are respecting, we're really trying to make sure that we do this in a balanced way, that's respectful of property rights versus what, quite frankly, maybe people wanted to do in the past. And I'll just tell you other, also anecdotally, I heard this on the campaign trail four years ago, hey, we got to do something with this, that area of Lake County. So, it's something that people would knew, they, you know, at least in South Lake, maybe not particularly much in North Lake, but they said, hey, what are you, what are you going to do with this area? There's a plan. Some people thought that there was opportunity for economically for that area. So, they've also approached me as well. that area, so they have also approached me as well. Yes.
Sean, along those same lines, you've got 16,000 acres, right? This is my first shot at this, at looking at this, and I'm just, this is my first time. But you've got 16,000 acres, you're telling me that you have contacted each individual property owner within that 16,000 acres?
All the, all the landowners within the 16,000 acres are part of the sector plan and have the opportunity, if they do not like the sector plan, to pull out and back out. Yes.
And you will exclude them?
And they will be excluded, yes. Yep. Very different than what was, again, done, you know, maybe with what some of them wanted to do a few years back, and that was put a conservation area over, mandatory over the entire area and not, you know, it is what it is kind of thing. That's what was being proposed a while back, but everyone was.
In this presentation, you talked about 50% set aside for open land. And then there's another place where it said 32%, which confuses me. But my question is, how you could call this not taking when you're setting the requirements that they have to set aside 50% of the land for something you want or the environmentalists want and that maybe they don't think there's a market for? And maybe you could explain how that's not a taking, because there are lawsuits going across the country against government entities where they have done things like that and set restrictions, but then damaged the value of, the future value of the land, because they may have a better future use, especially in the future. Maybe you can talk about that. And by the way, I think there's only about 30 landowners, Robert could confirm that. Is that correct? It's about 30?
120 total.
120. So it isn't a huge amount, it isn't like individuals?
But there's 27 major.
Okay.
27, that's what I said, 27. What did I say?
Do you want me to answer the 50%?
I want you to add to it, but I want to just come right out front and say, there's a big difference in why it's not a takings, because takings and the stuff that you hear about, particularly in northeast and out west, is where they say, you are going to have, we're going to save 50% of your land, you can do nothing with it. You can't have a road on it, you can't have any use. We don't like people being a part of the environment, which is crazy. You have to set aside as open space and preserve it, not do anything with it. There's a big difference. The open space is going to have flexibility with the sector plan, where if you want to dedicate parks, a park, an active park area, then you'll get credit. If you want to have a courtyard, which is, will help you market your, your commercial area. If you have an area that is a stormwater area, set aside for stormwater retention, you will get credit for that as open space. Other open space requirements didn't allow that. So you had, and again, going back to what was, was in place four years ago, proposed to be, on top of the 50% open space that you had to set aside, you also had to deal with retention, the parks and rep requirements, the courtyards, the open spaces, on top of that. That was a takings, in my opinion, you heard me campaign on that, because you had some cases where 90% of the land was unusable, which is taking away their economic benefit. So that's why, that's a big, there's a big difference on this, in my opinion, between that, what we, what was the status quo, or what was proposed back then, I should say.
The, the answer to your question about the 50%, the overall sector plan, when you look at the 16,000 acres, the goal was to have 50% of the sector plan remain in this open space. So that includes wetlands, it includes water bodies, it includes CONSERV II, which is about 3,000 acres. The requirements for each landowner and their DSA is 32%, and that's how you get the number up to the 50. So when you, when you come in with a DSA, 32% is your number. The goal is, when everybody does their DSAPs and all is said and done, you add up that 32% to the wetlands, to the water bodies, to CONSERV II, now you've got 50% of the 16,000 acres in open.
Again, a big difference than what was possibly proposed in the past, or what was proposed in the past, where on top of that 50%, the wetlands that you already had preserved, you also had to dedicate open space for that. So there was a takings in some cases.
One quick question. So there's 122 landowners, and you, how have you contacted them?
They were all contacted by, by staff.
And they have, they have-
By, in writing or?
We reached out to them.
By phone?
The group has a, they have formed a group, I don't know what the name, they've got an LLC that's helping finance this plan.
All 120 landowners?
I'm not sure how many are, are in the actual group, it's, it's the majority of them by law.
Yeah. All of them, that's, that's my concern. All of them have been willing to go out, though. I mean, that's, it's queer, it's.
That's, that's my concern, because this is a huge central planning, top-down planning. And I know, I just picture myself, I'm a small property owner, and I've got some guys coming down telling me that I've got to have 32% of this and 50% of that on my property, you know? And that's, I, I may consider that a negative for the sale of my property in the future. So, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering, the process that's used to contact each individual property, to, to secure the, the individual property rights is where I'm.
Yeah, well, to make sure that we protected their property rights, they, they have every opportunity to pull out, to not be a part of the sector plan if they do not want to be a part of the sector plan. Where in the past, again, you had a land use category that was broadly put upon.
Which is a problem, I think.
Yeah. And just to be very clear, too, I mean, you said central planning, I know you're not maybe necessarily making that like as an accusation towards me. This is generated by us, this is not an Agenda 21, something that was federally being told to me to do, and, I mean, this is, this is not that. This is generated here, it's ours, it will get approved based on people being a part of the process and not be mandated upon them. It's very different, I assure you.
How does that work, though? Like if this property owner says, yeah, pull me out of it, but the ones on all sides of them are him?
They might be able to sell it.
How does that work?
Well, they can, they can pull out, I mean, they, they have the opportunity to not be-
And so the road's going to come up this far and stop and serve?
There's a minimum of 15,000 acres that are required, so if more than, right now, 1,000 acres pull out, then we don't have a sector plan.
Yeah, that's true, and that's very clear. So it's, it's possible that if enough pulled out of it, they may not be a sector plan.
And what happens to the people that pull out? What are the restrictions on their future use of land?
It just goes back to the existing.
But then they can't ever sell it beyond agriculture?
Well, that's what most of them have, probably, is agriculture.
Then they wouldn't be allowed to convert it to developed land, if I remember right.
No, well, they, they-
Much you approve this?
They'd just split an application like anybody else. I mean, it would just be the status quo, they would go through and try to get a land use amendment changed, so, just like anybody else would now.
Well, I thought the comp plan locked it in, that once you guys approve it, it's part of the comp plan, and they're locked in and they cannot sell or redevelop that land because it's conservation. Robert is shaking his head, so there must be something of new.
Anybody can, anybody can go to try to get a comp plan change. I mean, that's up to the commission.
Yeah, that's what they'd have to do, though, they have to go through that whole process.
There's no conservation plans included. When we're talking open space, we're not talking long-term, putting conservation, no one can ever touch that land again. That's two separate fields.
Alan?
I applaud you for putting together an orderly plan and kicking consideration only thing away from my pay rate, but, or my entertainment. But something you touched on, and you touched on it pretty heavily, is this jobs-to-household issue. Obviously, we're still growing faster than the jobs. And for this plan to really be successful, we need to turn that around. Is that important enough that we would start screeching growth if the jobs don't come fast enough? And or, you know, I, it leaves me a little empty, it still seems, you know, which comes first, the jobs, there will be some jobs coming with that growth, but obviously not enough, but we're growing without an adequate number of jobs. So, you know, are we, it still looks to me like we're short in the area, how do we get jobs here? This plan is not going to be that successful unless we decide that we're going to set up efficiency of revenue. Would you say you don't think looks good?
No, I think, I think we need to market the plan as something that can be attractive nationally, as a place to, to grow, to come and bring your business. And I'll give you specifics, we're talking to businesses right now that want to be in the sector plan, some that are here locally, that want to be a part of this and are going to go from, one company can go from 40,000 or 50,000 square feet of medical laboratory where they do testing, like LabCorp does, to 200,000 square feet and 200 jobs. And they, they don't want to go anywhere else, they want to stay here, they love Lake County, and they want to be a part of the sector plan. I have, right now, one of the landowners has agreed to donate 10 acres to the, to an agency that will build a center for serving the disabled, both disabled kids and some wounded veterans, too. It'll be specifically set up for them to, you know, do ice skating, physical therapy, and some of the things that, right around in this area, but really even along the whole eastern seaboard of the United States, we don't have adequately, adequately have provided for. So there is a, you know, a landowner who's seeing the benefit of donating that and having that be something that could help catalyze those kinds of industries to come and be a part of the sector plan, so.
So you think the plan itself is going to drive industrial growth, do you?
I think it is, I do. I think you have to market, I think, that, again, there needs to be, the government, if you will, has to be a little bit a part of this. We don't create jobs, we're not going to do it, but we have to show that we've gone in partnership with them, the businesses, the landowners, to put this plan together and market ourselves nationally, even, even internationally. And I'll say that.
It seems to me there are two models that are being talked about. There's the bedroom community model, and there's the model which is really the comprehensive model. Now, I've lived in areas where the bedroom community is the model that they have chosen. And it means you don't have all of the infrastructure costs that go with building all of the commercial property opportunities. But you still have the opportunity to build a lot of houses and attract people who go elsewhere, earn a living, and bring those paychecks back home to spend with my grocery store and my car repair business and those things. So I kind of see two models, and I think this prompts me to ask that question, because what Ellen raises is, there really are two different approaches that can be taken here. Lake County has been successful in attracting a lot of people to come live in Lake County. It's just that we all understand that they're not working in Lake County. What becomes the financial advantage to Lake County to attracting the businesses that are here?
Well, I mean, I, I'm just having been in the business and knowing this area for a number of years, bedroom communities, yes, fiscally can, can work out in terms of this, the cost of services, when they have, when they are at a certain price point. I mean, Winter Park, obviously, you don't have the, you're not going to have the, you're not going to get, every house is not going to get an ambulance call or the sheriff coming to their house regularly. The cost of providing services to that type of a community is, is going to be lower. And so, yeah, they do work in some cases, I'm not going to deny that. But in, in Lake County, the numbers will show that the development pattern that we have is, it's far costly. I mean, you, you get one ambulance call or a fire, you know, the fire department to show up to your house, somebody that's paying $1,500 in property taxes one time, you're even going to double that, or it's, it's going to be maybe that same amount.
Or $200 in property taxes.
Yeah, or 200, even less, so it, it just doesn't work out. It's not, right now, it's just not the right mix for us.
What kind of income will we generate from this commercial approach that we're taking?
Well, in, in-
To the county, to the county, income to the county.
Well, I, I would tell you that we're talking, if we go through with the sector plan, some of the build-out scenarios show billions of dollars, several billions of dollars worth of added value. Yeah. Versus less underneath the development, the current development scenario. So, and you've gone through some of those analyses.
Ellen has got questions, there's some question for you.
Yeah, another problem with the bedroom community, studies show that people who work outside the county spend a lot of their disposable income out of the county. They buy a pit, they buy, they fill up their gas tank before they leave, when they leave work, before they come home. They have doctor's offices, doctor's visits in Orange County, they don't have them in Lake County. I mean, they spend a lot of their money outside of Lake County, and they, all they do is they come home, park their butts home, they may buy their stuff at Diddy Store, they may do some recreation here in Lake County, but they spend a disproportionate share of their income out of county, not in Lake County. They track it through their credit cards, they track it through a lot of their ways, there's all these ways to track how they spend their money. And they spend a disproportionate amount of it in Orange, Seminole, they don't spend it here in Lake.
Yes, thanks.
So all those, all those charts that show that disproportionate amount going out of county, a lot of that's going, their money's also going out of county, not just where they work. And you'd be surprised at some of the places where these people work, because we ran the numbers, got the information from Robert, we had people working Tampa, we have people working Holt County, Orange County, Seminole County. These jobs are going all over the place. And people are commuting hour and an hour and a half, living in Lake County. That's burning a lot of gas, and they're buying a lot of gas someplace else. I mean, we're spending-
And I was one of those people, I drove an hour and hour and a half to downtown Orlando, and I didn't, I'd come back, I wouldn't go to RAC meetings, I wouldn't go to things on Saturday night to donate, you know, $100 to sit down for a great cause. I didn't do that. It was, I didn't, that was time, you know, I spent enough time traveling, I wanted to be with my family, which you should, but there's a lot less time to do those other things, you've got to make choices, as we all know.
Yeah, and so that's, so we need to shrink that number, because we're, we're sending a lot of people away from us, and they're not spending their time here.
Right.
You need to shorten the time.
I know.
So, I mean, I'm cutting off questions, because I think it's really important that we have a discussion about it, and I don't want to cut it off, but I want everybody to understand that we do have a couple of other things to do tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. I feel as happy that I brought you in.
So let's get, you know, I mean, I don't want to cut off the questions for these important questions.
One more question?
Sure.
Okay, one more in the back.
My question is how far along are the process, hopefully, of getting companies to get, to bringing jobs?
We've got to get, the sector plan process is within several months possibly being approved with a concept plan, conceptual part of it, not a DSA, not a specific plan. We don't know when that'll be. That could be five or six years down the road. That's a landowner's choice. Right now, as I've said, I mean, I can tell you, Robert will attest, we have companies and we're working on, on, you know, things with them right now to try to, you know, to push them to, to not only relocate, but one, the one healthcare company, to actually expand and stay in Lake County, who's being recruited by Orange County, which happens, a lot of businesses do move to Orange County. They were, were serious, being recruited by Orange County and would have gone in that direction had we not reached out to them and told them, hey, this is something you can be a part of. And I actually hope that we'll have a, a public announcement about that soon, so.
Maybe in months, like a year?
Months, maybe several months. So. If you want me to be here, you can ask some questions. Thank you.